Thanks everybody for coming. My name is Melissa Troutman. I'm resident of the county. Here in Potter County. And I'm also the executive director of Public Herald. We are a non-profit news organization that was co-founded by myself and John Corbannic here in 2011. We are a member of the investigative news network, a local investigative journalism network. And we are happy to be asked to moderate tonight. We also have Save Our Streams Pennsylvania here, represented by Lori Bar and Marc Hall, who should be commended for their work over the past week canvassing impacted residents, securing hydrogeologist Brian Oren to come tonight and make endless calls and visits to local state offices, collecting water samples during the war. I'm going to introduce hydrogeologist Brian Oren in just a moment, but first we've asked you to come here because we have several concerns that are shared by others in the community. One of them is that there's no full list of chemicals that has been released related to contamination of the surface and subsurface groundwater. We don't have any official actions by local public officials yet, so that concerns us. JKLM is leading its own investigation and yet we're concerned they have solved the problem. JKLM is still operating their site in the valley despite admitting to illegally injecting chemicals underground, and DEP is still investigating. To answer some of our more technical, geologic questions, we're happy to have Brian Oren here. This is Pam Ryan, so you're busy where you are. Brian is a professional geologist with an extensive background in environmental research and all. His firm, VF Environmental Consulting specializes in hydrogeological and wastewater evaluations, soil consulting, environmental monitoring, overseeing the site, exploration and development of community and commercial water supply sources, environmental services. Just so we can see who else might be here to help answer questions. Do we have anyone from DEP in the room? Okay. Do we have anyone from JKLM in the room? Okay. Do we have anyone from Charles Cole in the room? Do we have any elected officials in the room? Paul, Commissioner Paul May in the room. Thank you. And then do we have anyone from media in the room?
Brad from Arizona.
Brad from Arizona. Cool. Thank you. Okay. So really quick, for anyone who isn't up to speed on the water contamination timeline at this point, I'm going to give a brief synopsis of events to date. And these are pulled from JKLM's press releases, DEP's press release that they issued today. So September 17th JKLM injected chemicals underground. And they initially reported putting 53 gallons of surfactant underground. Yesterday, they revealed in a new press release that it was actually 98 gallons, not 53. That was between September 15th and 17th. On September 18th JKLM press release from last week stated that it was on September 18th that the migration was discovered following the use of a surfactant free of broken drill bit piece in the well at 570 feet below ground. On September 19th, two residents about 800 feet from JKLM's Reese Hollow pad reported foaming water. September 21st, DEP responded and began monitoring JKLM's operations, according to DEP's press release today. Around September 23rd, it was about 72 hours after the residents closest to the well first reported foaming water, two more residents about 9,000 feet away from the gas well also reported foaming water. On September 23rd, Cattermore Borough shut down their wastewater supply as a precaution while awaiting test results. So far, no public notification has given, and they have not found any contamination in the water supply. Public Herald on September 23rd received a call from a whistleblower working within local government who revealed that both the borough and Charles Cole had switched over their water supplies otherwise we know. September 24th, JKLM called a meeting here with county officials present. Some members of the public, we were informed, were told that the meeting was not public. On that day JKLM, the press release stated that five private water wells were known to be impacted by the release, and they, JKLM, did provide replacement water sources to its property owners and other accommodations. September 25th, DEP press release from today stated that the department participated in a meeting on the 25th with Potter County Commissioners, PDMA, Potter County Emergency Management, Charles Cole Hospital, Cattermore Borough, and JKLM. That is also the day that Public Herald canvassed residents in the impacted area, and we were told from several that they still had no contact with DEP or local emergency or governing personnel, that their only contacts thus far have been from the company. And then today, September 30th, Save Our Streams Pennsylvania talked with DEP, it confirms with DEP's water gas, the ag on the county, that the department still has no inventory of what chemicals were used in JKLM's operation. They do not know the amount of pressure that was used to put chemicals in the ground. And they are unsure of how many households pulled a DEP sample, but they are aware that JKLM has reported a sample, 60. So that's a rundown of events so far. We have, we've noticed, we've looked up JKLM's compliance history on DEP's website, and we did notice that they have had a spill at their other site as well. And we need to pull that up, but our projector is not projecting very well tonight, so we wouldn't be able to read it anyway. Lori, do you remember what the release was on the other JKLM well pad? Are you here?
No, I can't remember, but... Well, something told me 270 gallons, I don't remember what it was. But they did get issued an oversight, and that's available online.
Oh, here it is. Okay, yeah. All right. So on DEP's website, Summit Council Potter County, there was documented release of an estimated 275 gallons of phosphoric acid, and then also 23 gallons of calcium chloride. It looks like those have been remediated. But JKLM is a pretty young operator. They have two wells in the county, and they have problems with both wells. Not saying they're bad company, I'm just stating the facts. So in this whole operation, who is in charge? So we have Potter County Emergency Management here in this county, and Commissioner Doug Morley is the director of that. And as far as I can tell, today, I looked on the website, and I couldn't see any, I saw no notifications or references to this incident from emergency management. We did talk to Glenn Dunn, who said he was unable to make it tonight. The natural gas task force, Commissioner Paul May, can you tell us if, what the natural gas task force or the commissioners, can you update us on what you guys, how you guys are responding to all this?
The response to the initiative was to engage your emergency operating center last week with the public safety as the main criteria. We have discussed this with JKLM. I've been pressing DEP personally on multiple occasions to start needing more revealing with what its actions are, what steps it has taken, what steps it will be taking. That's why the generated news release I gave today, but I was unable to catch up to the most recent relatives, because I have a planned vacation in the so-called town. And then they box ready to be installed. I would just say we're trying to hold the company and the state agency, which ultimately has the responsibility and the authority, accountable. But again, public safety and emergency response is priority number one. So that was the initial response. There's a little misconception, in my opinion, and it is somewhat in my opinion, that the county government does not have a lot of authority when it comes to regulation of the oil and gas industry. And it's a misconception on a lot of people's part. And there is currently litigation at the appellate level of the state court system, which could ultimately decide that yes, county and township governments do have to be in charge to regulate. The next question would be, is that the right place for it to be regulated? So I mean, it opens up a whole series of questions and issues if one even concludes yes, the county or a township should take upon itself to regulate this industry. So I just want to clear up that misconception. People are turning to the county government and think that we have can ultimately address this. I have to contest that at this point, but we're doing everything we think up to do. And I'm open to suggestion, I've been dogging this industry and this phenomenon for eight years now, trying to be as educated as possible about it, trying to inform the public through our task force and our resource center and our newsletters and the meetings that we've had in this room, on everything from air pollution to pipelines, as they say, for record of eight years. So I'm always open to input. I'm not hard to find.
Later, we will talk about some actions that are to be taken in other parts of the state by county municipal governments in the form of passing ordinances that protect things like source water protection zones. Triple Divide Watership Coalition was able to be here tonight. John LeBlanc was here. And they were also the ones who spearheaded the mapping of our source water protection zone. We have the great resource that is that map. John, do you want to talk about anything that the Triple Divide Watership Coalition is watching or doing or in response to this incident?
Um, I'm really interested in the outside loop, responding to this particularly. So I don't know anymore about it. I have maps of recharge area, which run along the valley, basically from 872 Route 6 up to Philly Howard. And that's about 20 years on a trail of normal water, traveled on through there. The band on the recharge areas is certainly narrow, 12 minutes, it's on both sides. So our best guess, if this event does impact public water supply, if it has anything around that recharge area that ran into it eventually in the well, but this seems to have a period of footage, so there must have been a fracture there somewhere. And I understand that the blue is coming kind of down north of basically.
Yeah, so this little star shaped thing is the Reese Hollow pad. And then we have some lines, it's hard to see, but basically we have a blue line drawn to the hospital, and also a yellow line drawn to the Hershey Pond, and they're about equidistant from the well pad, okay? On the hospital and Hershey Pond. Hershey Pond, when I say Hershey Pond, there's a pond, we call it Hershey Pond because Hershey Farm Market is right there, and it's in front of where the old Wolf's Head Restaurant.
Rook Side.
Rook Side. Yeah.
Never been there.
That pond has a positive for isopropyl and BBS, I believe, both of those were detected in that pond. So it is good that the public water sources around that area were shut off as a precaution, obviously, and they are still being monitored as far as we know. Does anybody here from the borough water authorities? Yes. Hello. Can you please identify yourself?
Mark P.
Mark P. Can you give us a quick update of what you guys are dealing with?
Uh, they shut the source down on the east. As far as I know, it's back up in operation because we had no detects at all.
So the east water supply is turned back on and currently being used?
I don't think they are. I mean, yesterday I talked to Beth, Mark, and she said that they were going to wait quite a while before they put it back on just for continuing testing, especially with this rain, weren't just sure how that might be moving the stuff.
So they haven't had any detects at all down there?
And I think it's still offline for now. As of yesterday.
So, so the gentleman here is asking, are the staff people not exactly sure if that water supply isn't going to be used?
As of yesterday, it was not. I was at the plant, we, DEP water, drinking water specialists were there, they tested samples, you know, first of all. The talent that was certain, well, that ended with, they took all kinds of samples, so they didn't get a good shot of what the water was like. The operator, as far as I know, is hurting those on the unknown well to waste.
Okay. Just a time check. Because at 8:00 we have Stephanie Simmons, who's an environmental risk assessment, running up the estate, and she can speak to the health, she's going to talk about the health risks associated with the chemical, the known chemicals involved. Paul, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I was right, Seth, but Beverly said yesterday that she feels that that water source will be turned off for an extended period of time. I'm 99% sure that extended period is more than one day, so I'd say it's virtually certain that they're not using that water right now.
Okay. Um, the hospital water supply, does anybody have any intel on that?
No, on the period of delay.
Okay. All righty.
There's an interconnection between the borough water supply and hospital, that's what they're even doing. So the borough is being supplied from the other treatment plant on the north end of town, like, there's not any access serving both the hospital and the borough at this point, and they're having their problems keeping up. But the hospital is doing the running off the whole finished water storage tank, and when it comes down, they turn the interconnect on, they fill it out, and it's over. So there should be no risk at all to the borough water supply or the hospital at this point.
Les, so what chemicals were used and under what pressure? Well, we're not entirely sure about that. And when Save Our Streams PA talked to Jennifer Means in about 4 o'clock today, she informed us that DEP, the oil and gas, basically has the same exact questions. What exactly is the full list of things, chemical additives that were put down the well and could be in the aquifer, and under what pressure were they put under the aquifer? So far, we know that the chemical primary concern is isopropyl. According to the Center for Disease Control, potential health impacts include irritation of the eyes, nose, and throat, drowsiness, dizziness, headache, and then dry skin. It also reactivates with chlorine. According to the MSDS sheet that we acquired for this kind of isopropyl, it is considered a combustible liquid in certain contexts, and also says it may cause irritation to the skin and eyes, the lungs, inhalation of the vapor may be harmful. Other suggestions were do not use, store, spill, or pour in air, heat, sparks or open flame, do not take internally, avoid prolonged or repeated breathing of vapors, avoid contact with skin, eyes, or clothing. What's being tested for in our drinking water? Does anybody have any intel on what's being tested for in our drinking water?
Oh, they wrote it off the list because they were collecting samples, but it was everything, basically.
Like a tier three?
They had the decks and both of them, the water supply.
Okay. So a little bit of everything. And then where can we get those test results is another question that we had. We wouldn't mind seeing the test results of our drinking water. I couldn't find any of that information online anywhere, but maybe you guys know if that information is available somewhere?
I was in the middle of the public. The community said the samples yesterday promised the operator they would send a copy of the results, saying that they were sent to the lab, and was priority placed on doing the analysis.
So maybe the analysis isn't even back yet?
Oh, no.
No?
Not in the books.
Okay.
Yeah, they just arrived at the lab this morning.
All right. Question?
Well, I spoke with JKLM today, and both JKLM and DEP are analyzing samples.
Okay.
And unfortunately, the turnaround time at DEP's lab is much longer than whatever lab JKLM is using. And JKLM isn't going to release any data until they double check their numbers against the DEP hits. And I guess if I were in their shoes, I'd probably take the same approach.
Or vice versa. What's that?
So, you know, they're both analyzing samples. It wasn't clear to me that they necessarily split samples, you know, two outlets from the same sample. They may be in some cases, but what JKLM told me, they're not going to release any actual data until it goes through the complete QA QC process and until DEP and JKLM compare their numbers to ensure they have the same.
We have at least one impacted resident who can share their experience with getting their water tested. Has anybody else had their water tested by JKLM? Okay. So Les, can you tell us what happened with you, and then anyone else who wants to share their experience, we'll give you a chance to do so. So this is Les Rock, everybody. He's part of Save Our Streams Pennsylvania, and he also lives on North Colorado. Project badly, what are you doing? Hi, Lisa.
I'm the microphone.
Okay.
Hello, friends and neighbors. Okay, some shock, some denial, some, I don't know if you can feel those kind of feelings or not, but, okay, on Monday, I noticed that Hershey's Pond was looking at it. Tuesday was looking worse. I live just around the corner from it, I drive to town, I live by it, which was really fast. It seemed like it was Monday afternoon or something, when I first noticed something. By Wednesday, it was really pretty white and ugly. And Thursday morning, I took a photo of it just before I went away for the Thursday night, came back Friday, and JKLM set my door, wanted to test my water. And through the grate line, they restored it, you know, you get the, what's what happened. And I'm still, they gave water, a couple cases of valid water, and I said, I'll get the results. They said, yeah, but they didn't want to, you know, be just, I wanted to know what was going on, you know, rather than just, you know. And he said, yes, I haven't gotten the results yet, and I, you know, bow out of drinking water. If somebody would want. I think it's quite a statement that JKLM isn't here, Charles Cole isn't here, DEP isn't here, and who else should be here? Isn't that quite a statement? That's a real statement of them showing I'm powerful, I'm not going, I'm arrogant, and what else can you say about it? You know, I personally went around and invited, DEP was invited, and I went to the little office down here at JKLM, made it very clear, just said, oh, yeah, I'd be there, and what much else? But what is it? I mean, you can't even get an answer to these questions, you know? Is this just more of a stall?
Anyone else, any other impacted residents want to share what, do you mind sharing whether you've had contact with DEP and what your experience has done? Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to say that my experience with JKLM and DEP has been nothing but positive.
Great.
They both responded very well to me and my home. I have nothing good to say.
Are you making, do we got an alternative water source right now, or? Yeah, go ahead. Do you know how long it's going to last?
I mean, isopropyl, affects with oxygen, dissolved oxygen in the aquifer, and dissolved out of that, and then pulled by an engineer that I work with. The foaming agent, did you see anything wrong with that? Is there any MSDS sheets that you found out?
Yeah, the MSDS sheet, we found out that the product name was F405, and the product manufacturer is Bachmann Services. And actually, on Bachmann Services, I wish I could project this right now, on Bachmann Services website, it has surfactants listed as fracturing and acidizing chemicals. We know that JKLM reportedly was using them during drilling operations, but on Bachmann Services website, it says that surfactants are used for fracturing and acidizing. So isopropyl is also listed on FracFocus as a fracturing additive. FracFocus is the industry website where companies disclose their chemicals that they use in their wells. So you've had a good experience. That's great. Anyone else? Yeah? No?
I just got my water tested today, and they took the sample today. And I'm northeast, I'm just the upper fringe, I'm on 705, and the people who came to test my water said that there's been no contaminations north of Borough's Road, nor on the east side of North Hollow going toward the hospital. So it's all just on that side.
It's all contained to that one area, it seems to be. Good. Yes, sir.
I got a question. They kind of don't know how, and they're afraid of the pressure. But now that they know that they have a problem, and North Hollow, I spent $370 before they started building on water testing, and then after this, after this incident, they have a potential water. Now that they know that they have a problem, once it clears up, are they going to forget it? And maybe in six months or a year, I gotta pop up another $300 to get my water tested and everything, or is this going to be an ongoing thing, where they come and they created a problem, so they're going to monitor their situation, and spend their money on the leash of the mine?
That is a good question. How long are they going to be monitoring the water? Are they, so Public Herald has looked at hundreds of water contamination investigations conducted by the state and by companies operating in Pennsylvania. Sometimes a company will see that water appears to be back to normal, and they'll stop water testing. Other times, they'll continue for another three to six months afterward. It's kind of dependent on the company and the extent of the situation. Josh?
Well, the law, the presumption of liability law states that if DEP determines that your water has been impacted, then the company has to provide you with a temporary resource until they can return your water back to its background conditions, and at that point, they would stop the monitoring. The monitoring would be ongoing if your water was considered to be impacted under the law, if they were in fact held responsible for contamination.
I got another question. Is there a buffer zone from places like West Forest, or maybe the high school, by the water source, or can you grill, if you lay your ground to them, can they grill where they want to? In other words, the hospital lays to the ground, or the borough lays to the ground, but the rest of it is, doesn't that give them a right to grill the wall where they want to? And does that make sense? Laying your ground, the southern point contaminates your water supply, and then act your water supply, it's contaminated, then what are we going to do about it? My question is, if there's not a buffer zone, they should do, because for money and our security, sometimes they can save the issue down the buffer zone, and there shouldn't be a buffer zone, I think.
So in terms of buffer zones, is that what we can consider the source water protection So in terms of buffer zones, is that what we can consider those source water protection zones, John? I mean, maybe not legally, but like for, for safety precautionary sake?
I can't quote them, but there's isolation distance, there's isolation distance, there's under a feet from a, from a well or from a screen or whatever.
But they have waivers.
I'm not that familiar with the ways to say what they are.
Yes, our, our state oil and gas regs do require shale gas wells to be so many feet back from the water supply. Do you remember what that feet, that footage is? My brain's going fried right now.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't remember.
Was it five hundred feet? DEP does grant waivers for that regulation.
Always, always.
And so they're, they sometimes issue permits for actually inside that buffer zone. But in all the work, great work that the county and the Triple Divide Watership Coalition has done to map our source water protection zones, that does not mean that they can't be drilled within. Is that an accurate statement? The source water protection zones can actually be drilled within, or?
So the eyes oil and gas regs, it just went through, we lobbied strongly to get this delineated recharge area included in the permit figure process, and we were successful at that. So it only applies right now with the oil and gas regulations. So yeah, they, they have taken account the recharge area, if, if we have unofficially delineated recharge area, we have.